Let's start with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Just as a reminder, if anyone has one of these in their possession, please turn it to silent. Thank you. And I'll call the roll. Our district attorney, Tony Pierce, is present. Supervisor Tinkle is present. Supervisor Banks has let Chris Schumaker know he's going to be late. Supervisor Feinberg is here. Supervisor Guy also letting Mr. Schumaker know who's going to be late. Supervisor Flaherty is here. And our district manager, Chris Schumaker, is here. And we also have with us Stephen Blue from Infomark. And with that, the workshop. Got to ask a couple of questions before we start? Is this related to the workshop?
Yes, it is.
Some editing questions? Okay. All right. On page seven of the agenda, it says, um, direction to schedule a public hearing at the February 21st meeting, that's Friday.
Who are you looking at there, Kevin?
Uh, Agenda page seven. I just wanted to know if it's going to be the 21st or the 20th.
Is that a?
I'm assuming it's a typo.
Is it a typo?
Yeah, but it's a typo.
Okay. And then, um, that's what I'm correcting, some of the typos. Agenda page seventeen. Okay. Is that Infomark? Is that them?
It's Infomark.
Okay, so that is a, okay. I just figured maybe it was a different, because sometimes there are people that almost spell the same.
No, I, and you'll see there, within the presentation, I've made a number of those corrections and changes.
Page seventeen.
Page seventeen, because when they spend seventeen.
I know, I have, I have several, but I think it's.
Are we going to do that? Because I've got a ton of these. I thought we were just going to handle as we went through the meeting.
Yeah.
Yep, and Chairman Chair would suggest that allowing Mr. Wire to go through and if there are any typos, correct them on the slide. And what I would suggest is that the corrected revised PowerPoint, you may part of the record.
Yeah, that's fine. And I, and that's what I have here soon. They have a copy.
So to hand out, you hand it out.
No, I didn't make a handout.
I think that we copied that.
Ah, okay.
And it's the same as the one we.
We're just going to look.
Go ahead and ask a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Are you, this is, this report is 100% finished?
Yes.
Thank you.
Well, I guess for clarification, this is not the report. This is a PowerPoint. Are you sure to have a separate report?
No. Yeah, I mean, I can do the write-up on it, but that's, you know, it, a lot of times, they serve as the report, as here's the step as we go through itself.
I can't think of anything that would be in the report other than appendices that would be more than this that would be in the report.
Right, and, and appendices will come, will come with this. They, you'll, you'll have your appendices, you'll have the backup and all of those good things. Plus, the final spreadsheet that you'll have, that will determine the assessments when your budget, when your budget gets in.
So with that.
Am I on?
Yes, I'll send it over to you.
Okay. All right, you see, I make that go, uh, go perfect. Uh, one of the first corrections was about the date. It was, it said January 23rd, 2019, and now it's 2020. So we did make the change on that. This is Chair and Board members, thank you for having me back. I think after all of these, about a year and a half, a year or two, we've finally gotten to the end of where all the numbers, um, finally get to the assessments, so that we can look at what the assessment was. And I, and I'm, at the end, I will give you a couple of different alternatives of ways of doing it. We've gone into this super detail. Each parcel has its own assessment, and we can go to that kind of a detail. And I've rolled them back up, I think, in, in total time. So today, what I want to do is, is the first couple of things I'm going to go through relatively quickly, because we've covered them in the last couple of meetings that I've been here. One of we actually adopted, which was the, uh, the mix on the budget analysis with the, and you guys adopted that back in the last version. We did the percentages for property reserve and all of those. We, we did that, it was all adopted. Uh, then I'm going to go through the development mix analysis, the determination of the benefit, the benefit analysis, and then the calculation of the assessments, and then the rolled up assessment rules based on for Gateway and Pelican Preserve. Give me the next slide, please. Again, in the background, you know, this was addition. We're looking to change a methodology which, which started was back in 1986. Uh, the Board of Supervisors at that time, and through, through the case, through the case numbers, the commissioners' report for the second assessment area was all approved at that point. The case determined that the equivalent assessment unit was the most effective measure of determining the benefit received from the project. Next slide. And the, the method of that was, this is the whole calculation of how they got to it. And we talked about that before. It was based on water management, which made sense, because the only thing we had at that time was blank land. And really, all we were taking care of was water management. We didn't have roads, we really didn't have, we hadn't started of the administration, but all of those other elements that were in the budget weren't ready yet, or really weren't doing it. So that's why it was based in water management. That made sense. They did require back in there, not require, but they, they had recommended that they take a look at this every few years as the project evolved. That never really took place for, up until now. You know, the past couple of years, the ham was raised to say, well, let's take a look at this and see how the benefit actually comes out based on, it was all done on water management, but let's see how it actually does it if you look at the benefit of a road versus a lake water management versus administrative. Uh, next slide, please. Again, it was the most reasonable methodology. And then, we have added the line items and the different budgets, which we have broken out into roadways, water management, and what I would call administration. But under administration falls the parks and the security and all of those good things fall into that line as well. And we talked about the two-prong test for assessments. Next slide, please. And next one again. Uh, special and peculiar benefit, that what do you get for that? And the second one is, is it fair and reasonably apportioned? So, it, okay, keep going. Next one, please. The O and M of the district accrue different amounts and are dependent on the type of land use receiving the special benefit. And we, we talk about that in, with water management. We talked about that with the roadways, and we talked about that with administration as we go on. Next slide. And then fair and reasonable, which means if you pay these special assessments, this is all the legal jargon that goes into it. And it's a reasonable estimates of the special benefits received. So if, if you're a single-family home, you use the road so much. If you're multi-family road, you use the roads a little differently. If you're on commercial, you use the roads differently. And the same way, when we look at the, the water management system. There, it's, it's based on pervious and impervious surfaces. Understanding pervious being that, that water will go down and flow in below. It's not interrupted. Impervious means buildings, parking lots, roads, all of those good things. That's, they, they flow basically 100% into the water management system. So those are the peculiar benefits that are received by each of the parcels. And you have to remember that two-prong test. So the original methodology did meet the two-prong test for valid assessments at the time, because it was a water management benefit. Uh, but using the current methodology, which uses a fair and equitable method of allocation, uh, that, that may not meet the leanability test, although it could. It, it just depends on how you discuss it and determine that. When you add the line items such as road, which I talked about, road, road maintenance, and how much, uh, each type of land use uses the road, administration and operations, landscaping, parks, recreations, and all, all of those elements are used. The new methodology that I have, that I'm preparing or presenting today, I reviewed each of those line items in the budget and put them into the three categories. It was either roadways, um, and it was, or water management or administrative. Uh, that's where we went with that. So, and I, and then we calculated mathematically, calculated the benefit each of the parcels had received from that. Next slide, please. Keep going. Under the budget analysis, uh, the general district-wide administrative. Oh, go ahead, go ahead. This is where we talked about where it was split seventy. We, you guys adopted all of this, or you members of the board already adopted this back in, in May, when you did the budget. So I don't know if we really need to go through that again, if you want to keep going. I, the meeting minutes on the split percentages and we, we had a, oop, keep going. Keep going. Uh, we used the payroll, uh, timesheets back then, keep going. Keep going, because again, we did this. Uh, the, the way the timesheet showed it, the enterprise fund was 59%, the general fund was 41%. Keep going. And then the administrative costs have been split 67%, 33% to Pelican Reserve. Uh, there was a, the good justification for that split, if you recall. Both the acreage and the ERUs for both areas showed basically the same percentage split. So you adopted it based on those theories and bases. Next slide, please. And there it is. That was the justification for it and how we got to those percentages that were adopted. Next slide, please. And that's how it ended up. You, I don't know why those things popped up first, but, uh, now we're at 59% on the enterprise fund, general fund one, 27, and general fund two was the 14%, and that's what was adopted. Next slide, please. Now, I want to talk a little bit about the development mix analysis. There was a determination of 15 parcels that were presented as we were going through this process for me to take a look at. And we went into detail regarding the Gateway commercial apartment, or commercial parcel assessments. The methodology needed to be revised from the 5.8 EAU methodology. The parcels were analyzed and categorized accordingly, as will be shown later. So among those parcels were, were some in Pelican Reserve, which we have analyzed and recalculated. And there were some here in Gateway themselves, which are analyzed and all recalculated. So that's how we got to the individual parcel assessments. Uh, all the lakes and preserve wetlands were taken out of the analysis as they are a part of the water management system when determining an impervious percentage of developable land. The golf course land, for instance, would be cal, calculated as vacant land. And it's, and it has, even blank land flows into the water management system. And approximately 20% of a blank land, as opposed to, um, you know, what, what you, opposed to zero, I mean, there's still some flow that comes off of the blank lands. So basically, what we did is, is everything, all the blank lands got a 20% flow into the water management system. And then I measured, um, actually, each parcel was measured in terms of pervious and impervious surfaces. And for the commercial, which I'll get into later, but I measured each of the commercial parcels in here. You know, I went around and preliminered each of the parking lots, the sidewalks, all of that, because those were the impervious surfaces. And then the perv, or the pervious surfaces were the remaining part of the acreage. Again, taking out any lands that were owned within the lake, because you don't assess the lake, it's a part of the water management system. Uh, so that, that made it clean and, and easy to do. And then, for all of the residential parcels, including the multifamily parcels, in the property appraiser data, there is data in there that shows the, um, the GIS acreage, which tells you the actual acreage amount for your, like a single-family parcel, tells you what that is. And then there's also the building area, which is included in that data. So I utilized both of those, which gives us a percentage. If you had a half acre, for instance, for homes like this, it's just a simple, simplistic way of looking at it. And on that acre, the half acre, you had, let's say, 25% of that half acre. So a quarter acre was the actual home and all the impervious surfaces. That, that half acre, uh, the quarter acre would be 100% impervious. And then the remaining, uh, 20, 25% or the remaining, yeah, .25 of the half acre, 20% of that would be included in the calculation. So that's how you had the total, um, water, the, the amount of flow that goes into a water management system. And that was done for each parcel in here. There were 44,882 residential parcels. And then looking at the commercial, there was a couple hundred of those. So that's why it's taken so long to go through all of this data. Anyway, that's, that's how we calculated the water management part. And then the district legal counsel, Tony, had, had recommended that according to the Florida statutes of legal and moral health system, parcel shall be exempt from the district assessments and that the charter school was exempt from assessments as a result of the charter, charter school settlement agreement. Next slide, please. Analysis of Pelican Preserve, Arborwood Phase Three and Worthington. Pelican Preserve assessments were basically left alone on one ERU basis with changes to the golf course acreage, which we took out all of the, um, the lakes and the wetlands and all of that that were owned by the golf course. Those were taken out, because they're water management system. We don't assess this. We assess the actual lands that contribute to the water management system. So again, we go, I go back to, if you look at their golf course acreage and did the same thing for Gateway Golf Club. I did the, the actual clubhouse, the maintenance facilities, all of the impervious surfaces were calculated in that acreage. But then, on the golf course, 20% of all the golf course lands that are not in the lake contributed to the water management system. So they were calculated that way as well. And until it is, um, the commercial assessments, I'll discuss those a little further into the presentation, because I did take a look at all the commercial parcels that are there and also the blank parcels that were left outside and inside of the gate, because there is a different determination for those two. Arborwood Phase Three is not connected internally via a road to the Gateway community at this time and is currently under development. Uh, until it is developed, and we, and now I understand there's a plat. Is that the one we're talking about? There is a plat for Arborwood. So now, we'll need to take that parcel and look at that in terms of, of the individual units plus what they're contributing into the water management system based on the, the whole thing. For the time being, it's, it's considered a blank parcel at the moment. So once I take the plat and I can put those units back in, that's actually will ultimately lower assessments for everybody, because it's going to be, as opposed to a blank parcel, you're going to have assessments on a per-unit basis.
Russ, is?
Yes.
It won't impact Gateway, will it? Because it's, the only thing it's got is water. It's not connected, so by definition, it doesn't share in the other benefits. So when its 143 homes come on, the only benefit it will have will be to, what? Value reserve?
Not sure yet, Ed, until I take a look at the plat. Because I want to make sure where the connections are. I want to make sure where the water management is flowing.
Well, the water management is certainly going to Pelican Preserve. We, we know that, they're building it that way. The, uh, issue that it's not connected to Gateway at this time, it'll never be connected, because there's no way to connect it. It, it's going to be connected to the city of Fort Myers to the south. It won't touch Gateway.
Any of the Gateway ones?
And it never will. We tried to get them to connect, but they wouldn't do it. But I just don't see them on the administrative and the roads, since they have what basically is the same agreement that Pelican Preserve has. They won't participate in any of the Area One related costs. No roads, no parks, no recreation, no, no nothing. So if they come on, or when they come on with their 143 homes, it'll really make Pelican instead of 2,500, be 2,643.
Which will.
It, that, it, that, no harm, no foul to us here.
Right, but, but I just want to make sure that when we did that, is, is going to be one of the things I'm going to recommend that every year, we need to take a look at. There, there will be two areas that we need to take a look at. One will be all the new plaques that have come out over the year. Uh, from the blank, so we're converting blank lands to assessed units. And the second part will be, is if we have a, um, uh, somebody changes. And a great example, we talked about the other day, was what happens if you have a, a, tennis court or, or blank, I shouldn't say tennis court, maybe a bocce court, which can be impervious. And now, all of a sudden, you change that to a pickleball court. Now it's perv, or now it's impervious. It went from pervious to impervious. So what we will need to do is take a look at building permits that have happened around here and see if there's been any changes to that point. Which will change, it won't change the assessments very much, because it's very minute in the grand scheme of things. But to keep it, uh, keep the assessments and everything according to the benefit, that's what we need to do, that, that needs to be done every year. So, um, and I would recommend you start doing that, well, again, before we get to our budget thing, um, before you start getting into your budgets. Be a good thing to do that. So, uh, Worthington is also not connected internally via road to the Gateway community and is not developed at this time. I understand, you know, they've since sold that parcel. They're, should be coming through with a plat soon, hopefully. We'll need to take a look at that and convert that over, because right now, that's also a blank piece of land. That's the way we treated it. And to understand, it still has a, uh, it still receives a benefit. And, and the way I did with the blank lands, I did for, for trip generations, I figured two trips a day, and that's mow the grass, or if they had somebody come through as a realtor to show it. They're still impacting even this blank piece of land, the roads. So I gave them two trips a day for that. And then I did on the blank lands, it was 20% of the blank land flowing into the water management system. And that parcel received one EAU on the administrative side. So every parcel, every commercial parcel, every single-family unit got a one EAU for administrative costs. Because everybody participates equal, I mean, they come into the office equal. They have an equal opportunity to come to the office. So, so that's the way I felt it was best to handle that part of it. So, again, uh, it was considered a vacant parcel, and all the vacant parcels of Gateway was treated that way. Next slide, please. Okay, there, I put these in, these aren't in your packet yet. Those will be a couple of extra slides, you'll see. This was the, um, the Arborwood parcel, as we can see. You said, and you'd mentioned that it's going to be connected at the south end?
The north end up there by the word P in Bastoya, it's a 42 or a 48-inch pipe that comes from Arborwood and goes over to the wetland.
Okay, and that, that's from the water management. What about, uh, roads in that? Where are they getting connected?
The road goes due south. You can see it at the very bottom left-hand corner. Little road stubs down and it goes into, uh, Arborwood Phase One. Uh, and then the green strip to the west is the proposed 100-foot right-of-way belonging to Lee County to build that interconnection four-lane highway.
Okay. I put that in there just so we have as a reference. The next slide, if you would. And that is the, um, Worthington parcel that was just sold. We don't have anything on it yet. Uh, next slide, please. Okay, uh, as noted in the previous word slide, the Gateway Golf Club and the Pelican Preserve Golf Club lakes were taken out of the total golf course acreages. And here is an example of the detail that we took in determining the actual golf course acreages that would be assessed. Next slide, please. This is at Pelican Preserve. Uh, as you can see, the, the blue stuff up there is all the golf course. Now, I didn't take the lakes out of that one yet, but the purple isn't, is all golf course owned or owned by the golf course, but their water management. And, and they are actually receiving the water off of the golf course as opposed to being a part, or should, should not be assessed because of that. And that's when I went around and preliminered all of the golf course, both of them, and took out, again, the water management part, took the lakes out, all of that. So, so I had a good net acreage of the golf courses themselves. Next slide, please. Uh, in addition, in addition, the lakes owned by development parcels were also taken out of the water management calculation. Here's another example of that. Next slide. You can see is, this one is, uh, what's the name of this?
Royal Greens.
Royal, I knew it had a royal in it. Uh, the Royal Greens one, it had some of the, of the property line was in the lakes. Well, that was all taken out of there as well. So they, uh, I took those out in their acreage calculation when I did the water management system. Next slide, please. Okay, now, now there are three ways we did this. There's, there's three parts to this. First is trip, or first part is the roadways. And the roadways, the, the landscapedness along the roadways, all of those elements, their budget line items were put into the roadway budget. And to do the roadway budget, I did it under trip generation, which, which makes sense. I mean, the roadways are there, how much you use the roadway. And, uh, I used the Institute of Traffic Engineers eighth edition Trip Generation Report. And we, we talked about this in the past. It shows, and, and they use studies from everywhere. The only other way you can really do it is hire a transportation thing, and that's just way too expensive, way too expensive. This is, is, uh, and the Institute of Traffic Engineers is used everywhere just about. Even when they do traffic studies for, um, when they do, um, when you're going for entitlements, inland, they do the, the transportation studies, they use the ITE stuff, which we talked about. So, and I showed, it shows the daily weekday trips by land use. And give you the next slide. And this is, this is what we use. So for a single-family home, it generates 9.57 trips per day. Multifamily home uses 5.81 trips per day. Vacant land, I use two per day. That really didn't come out of ITE, because they didn't have one for blank land in the ITE. The golf course on a per-hole basis has 35.74 trips per day for golf. So you multiply that by 18, you can tell how many trips are being generated. Then the elementary school on a per student is 1.29. General office, you go right on down the line. But you can see on a per-day basis, that's what we utilize. And it, I'll give you a good example again, too. If you look at the general office, the per-thousand square feet, so if you have 11.01 trips, daily trips, and you have a 10,000-square-foot building, you multiply the 11 times 10, because you divide the, the 10,000-square-foot by 1,000, so you have 10. So you have 121 trips per day. And that's how that was calculated for a commercial parcel. And so then we added all those up. So he's single-family home, I had a column on the right that said 9.57, 9.57, all the way down. Did it for the multifamily. Then I added all the commercial ones up on the right-hand side. In that column at the bottom, I will have a total number of trips. 10,000, 20,000, whatever that number was. Then I went back up under each one and then divided that, their 9.57 by the 10,000. And then I divided the 121 by the 10,000. So it got a little bit of a percentage. Every parcel got a little bit of percentage. Then I multiplied that percentage by, or I multiplied the budget for roadways by that percentage, and that's how they got their assessment for each roadway. That make sense?
Russ, what are the numbers behind each of the deals? Is that the chapter number or section number?
Uh, actually, that's the use number. I think it's the DOR code that they use, or their use number.
DOR, being part of revenue?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's their use number. So that's how I calculated the assess, the trip generation assessment for each of the, and, and it makes sense from a benefit perspective. Um, you know, the commercial, it's generating many more trips than a single-family home would. And, and then we had a church one, we also had corporate headquarters. Next slide, please. Now, under the water management system, impervious, 100% flow into the water management system. Pervious, 20%, which I explained earlier. And so I took 100% of the impervious acres and 20% of the, that should be pervious acres. And then to total acres impacting, that's how I get a total acre amount for the water management system. Same basic concept. Each one had, if, if you had a four-acre parcel and you're, you're, uh, you're impacting, let's say, three of those acres, it ended up being 75% impact when you added those two together. So it had three acres go over into that column. And then, on a single-family, if you were, you were .4 acres and you impacted it by, half, half of that impacted it, plus 20% of the other went over in that right-hand column. So you had a .3, a .25. So you added all of those acreages up. And then we went back and divided each of the, the parcels by that acreage, so we got a small percentage. And then I took that percentage again, multiplied it by the water management budget, went on right down the line. So each parcel, each parcel had its own assessment.
So that 20% of impervious should be 20% of pervious.
Correct. That was one typo I didn't catch. And again, I took the lakes out of the golf course acreage and the acres that are total, oop.
There we go.
Oh, okay, thank you. I'm wondering what happened there. It's self-correcting.
That's a good thing, thank you.
Yeah. Yeah. Anyway, I took the lakes out and, uh, that are in total ownership acreage but are not in a lake, like a multifamily parcel that I showed you, you should not be assessing the water management system. And then the above calculations separate the acreage. And then the above calculations separate the acreage that is impacting the water management system, just like I explained. And that's how, oh, we also did not include any of the acreage owned by the district, things like that, and which, which makes sense, I mean, they just don't get assessed, you don't assess yourself.
And you used this analysis on both Gateway and Pelican Preserve?
I did not use this in Pelican Reserve, which I went back, if you recall, when I went back, I said they were going to do their one EAU concept, if we can go back and do that, if we want to do, if we want to take both of these and do it for them as well, but I was under the impression that they still wanted to maintain the way they were doing their assessment. It wouldn't be hard to do, let me tell you, that's easy, I have all the data. And then the above calculations, we ended up, I didn't include the district, and that's how we ended up getting the little piece, so we have roadway piece now, we have water management piece. Next slide. And there, and the yellow boxes really for agricultural lands or blank lands, and they range anywhere from point oh five to point five as a percentage. Point two seemed to be a very good average runoff from a blank piece of land, that's where that came from. Next slide, please. Here is the detail, I just wanted to show you the detail, I went into, this is a commercial parcel that I measured. So you can see, the purple is the impervious surface, and the green inside of the blue line is the pervious surface. So I took eighty percent of that acreage that's in, or a hundred percent of that acreage that's in purple, and then I took twenty percent of that green of all of that acreage within that parcel. And that's the total amount of impact that that had on the water management system in terms of acres. So they had their, that would have been, let's say that was, that was a ten-acre parcel, and it was probably nine acres of it, just as an example, nine acres would be impact, so it would move the nine acres over. And if it was a single-family, it said you like port four, whatever it was, that's how it all calculated on. Next slide, please. Administrative landscaping, parks, rep, public safety, all falling into the, and not the landscaping that's along the road, but this is other peripheral type landscaping, like around here. The primary measurement is the equivalent residential unit, or I call it ERU, it could be equivalent assessment unit, however you want to call it. Each parcel received an EAU of one, as each property owner has an equal share of the administrative benefits, is how that was calculated. So that budget, everybody got a one, that's why you'll see in the calculations, everybody had the same EAU, whether you were a single-family, or you were a commercial piece, every parcel had an EAU of one. Next slide, please. Okay, now, I need to show the Excel spreadsheet I wanted to, not the parcels, that one, yep. We're going to pop this up, I have three places to show the spreadsheet. This, this will give you an idea of, can you enlarge that just a little bit? To give you an idea, and I did this, this is actually by neighborhood, what I did is I took each individual parcel, and I can show you the other spreadsheet by parcel, how I did this. It's all nice, it's got nice little colors on it, so I can keep track of them. But this got rolled up into neighborhood, because back at the last meeting that we had back in May, I think it was, we talked about rolling them up into the neighborhood instead of having, what, five thousand two hundred and some odd different assessments, we wanted to roll them up, see how it would look within the neighborhoods. And this is how it came out in the neighborhoods. Area one is residential, so one parcel, the guy has up by the golf course, Mahogany Halls had forty-eight units, and the road assessment, the road assessment is, because that's a single-family, you can see it's, you know, in the water management assessment, that's how that came out, and then everybody had the same on the administration parks and the recreation stuff. The total assessment, you add those three up, is that your total assessment? Here was the old assessment, well, at the top, by the way, is all the budget, is the budget, as you can see up there, the road budget, the water manager budget, and those all add up when you get down to the bottom, and you add the commercial to it. So then you can see the variance, so one parcel, because it was, it had such a big impact in the water management system, it went way up. But a lot of them, you know, and you'll find, the big thing about this is, the single-family all went up, the multifamily all went down, and there were two reasons for that. The first reason was the trip generation, because the multifamily units, based on ITE trip generation, impacted the roads less than the single-family did. And the water management system, when you look at it on a per-unit basis, it's counterintuitive, and we discussed this before, you'll have, you'll have five acre, or you'll have a ten acre multifamily parcel, right? And it throws nine acres just into the water management system, just like the commercial does, but you have so many units there, two hundred, three hundred units, that you take that assessment that it gets as a percentage. So that, on a per-unit basis, the assessment for the water management system is a lot less, because it's compact, it's counterintuitive, you would think it would throw, they would get more because they throw more into the, as a residential piece, they would throw more into the water management system. They do as a parcel, but because of that parcel has so many units on it, it's actually less. So those two things were the reasons that single-family went up and multifamily went down. Now, I did this by, again, by the neighborhood, as we can see, the single-family, and then slide down a little bit more, then you can see the multifamily, and then you can see on the right-hand side there, before, you see where the red numbers are, that's the variation. So you can see, there, those assessments went down, while the other assessments went up. And then you go into the commercial, some of them went up, some of them went down, and that was primarily driven by the ITE, the traffic, because some uses have higher traffic use than others do. So you can see, some of the commercials went down, some went down, over, or some went up, overall, commercial went down just a little bit. And primarily, that's probably because of the acreage that they were contributing to the water management system, even though they're more of a contributor on a parcel basis, the parcel bases are smaller when you compare the single-family units and the multifamily units. And that's, so I went on each one individually, as you can see here, keep going down a little bit, I'll go all the way down. That's all the commercial parcels that I measured, so, gives you an idea. Okay, go back to my presentation in a second. Next slide. Now, the assessments, each parcel within the district, again, as I mentioned before, had an assessment determined for it based on the traffic generation, water management, and all that. The parcels were then rolled up into the neighborhoods as I just showed you. The parcels within each neighborhood were averaged for each of the three categories, which created, so if you had a hundred and fifty units in there, and they all, and single-family was easy, they're all nine point five seven. The water management might be a little bit different, some may be a point four, some may be a point three, some may be a point seven. Within all of those, I, you added them up and divided by the number of units, so you got an average, because I was trying to get an average for that neighborhood. And the same thing with the EAU for the administration was pretty easy, pretty easy, because that was all the units times one. So that gave us the neighborhood one. And as we were looking at this, an issue kind of arose within the neighborhood assessment, as some neighborhoods had a wide disparity of home sizes, and it was difficult to determine where the cutoff would be between sizes. See, and there's another way you can do it, you can say, all homes that are below a thousand square feet had X, and then, so if I had a thousand one square feet, now I'm up to the one thousand, two hun, two thousand square feet. So what, so go down to the next one again. This, this was just the example of the, of the, example of the bigger picture I just showed you, because there's not, those all don't add up, but there were a single-family thirty-six hundred and multifamily seventeen hundred units, a total of forty-eighteen. But that was an example of the neighborhoods. But, and I understand, if you recall, you know, we all had one assessment for the residential, and we had another assessment for the commercial depending on its size. So what I did is I went back and took all of those, all the single-family ones and all the multifamily ones, and averaged them, so I could roll it back up to see what would happen if we had a single-family assessment, a multifamily assessment, and then the commercial parcels would have their individual, like we did in the past. If you go to the next slide, please. So, go, next slide again. Whoa, which way are you going? We're going down? Thirty-three. So, okay, go to, go to the next one after that. No, I don't think so.
That's blasting.
Is it blasting?
Yeah.
Ah, okay.
We hear all the time.
So due to that issue that I mentioned earlier, we, we recommend that there's another possibility, we can do three ways to do the assessments. The one is you can do it individually, and you're going to have five thousand two hundred and some odd different assessments. You can do it by neighborhood, which you're going to have, all of those neighborhoods will have their assessment, the multifamily will have their assessment, and then the commercial. Or we can roll it up to the single-family, multifamily, and each of the commercial parcels. So if you pop, one more. The way it came out, the assessment for a single-family in this case would have been, if we used this past year's budget, because the assessment was five hundred and fifty-four, and the new assessment for a single-family would be six hundred and twenty-one, so it would go up by sixty-seven fifty-one, if we would have adopted this last, this concept. The multifamily, the assessment comes down by a hundred and seventeen dollars and forty-nine cents. And then, the commercials again are on, each one, as you saw, the individual, they were, they varied, depending on their impact. But I didn't do one for all of the commercial, because it was easy to go through on each one of those and do that. Next slide, please. Before I get into Pelican Reserve, does anybody have any questions about how I calculated and what I did, how we got to those numbers?
Russ should point out one thing, just so that everybody understands it. If you go back to the slide that shows Stephen, the great pound of all of the Stephen families.
You mean, you like the Excel spreadsheet?
No, no, yeah, yeah, the Excel spreadsheet, sorry, sorry. We got a little bit of a problem, yeah, built at the residential. And I've got to explain this to my people, and it's going to be difficult. Gateway Greens has fifteen sub-associations, no other communities have that. So it allowed and offered the ability for you to break up, example, a good example, a graphic example, is Hidden, or Hampton Greens, that's inside the double gates, inside Gateway Greens, that's got the huge homes, huge lots.
Correct.
You go to Fairway Isles, North and South, which is a residential deal, about a hundred and seven or something, whatever the number is, that's got much smaller lots. If I go to Hampton Park, for example, I will find a plethora of the houses that fit the Fairway Isles on one side of Hampton Park, and on the other side, I'll find the houses that fit Hampton Greens. But the issue is, they're treated as one. That's going to be a hard pill to swallow to my fifteen hundred residents.
Right.
And the only answer is, you just go in there and blend them, and treat Gateway Greens the same as the others, you just blend them all together.
Well, that's why I, this is based on that residential thing, Stony Brook has the same issue, I think there's, you have some big ones and you have some small ones, it's the same issue. I think the way to overcome that was to do the single-family and multifamily.
That's probably the easiest way.
Would have been the easier way. There's another way of cutting the cake, if you will, or cutting it up, and that is, which I talked about, the categories, you can do, you know, the five thousand square foot homes, the four thousand square foot homes, the three thousand square foot homes, and we can categorize it that way.
Your only problem with that is, is you've got people who'll say, well, I'm twenty-nine ninety-nine, and I just get away with it, the other guy says, I'm three thousand and one.
I, no, I agree, I agree, there's, there could be a lot of issues with that, but anyway, that was, that's why I was recommending the rolling up to the...
But, and the other part is, is that it should have been done years and years and years ago, and I agree with you on what you've done on the multifamily. That is definitely now fair and equitable, it hasn't been in the past, not at all.
Can I let Mrs.?
No, please, let your attorney go. Oh, no, I'm last, the board member first, all right.
Go ahead. Well, I don't think it's fair and equitable, I don't think someone who has a smaller house should pay the same as somebody who has a bigger house, bigger properties, and that doesn't seem fair and equitable.
Let's go one step further, Kathleen, let's say they have six kids, and I have a big house, and I have none, is that fair?
If you have a bigger house.
No, I'm not talking about kids, I'm talking about trip generation. They now make a lot more trips than I make. So I mean, it goes down the line that it gets tough to call us out to how you're doing.
Yeah, one thing from, and I think Russ could, to that point, I think Russ would reference this, the ITE, as they call it, International Traffic Transportation Engineers, I think, have...
Institute.
Institute, they have the manuals, they update based upon real-world samples and graphs of various communities as to trip generation. And typically, from a residential perspective, the most intense trip generation is single-family, generally, ten trips per day is the ITE number. Then after that, our Villas Townhouses and Apartments, about seven and a half to six and a half trips per day, is my recollection. Then you start going down the scale to sort of like ALFs, you know, system living facilities might be two and a half, and that's how, and that's what Russ is using, that's an accepted traffic impact statement, traffic impact analysis tool. And again, it's not precise, but it's utilized, it's by all engineers that I'm aware of, and planners, to determine when they try to ascertain the impacts on a road network or on a system, they use those ITE numbers. Is that a fair statement, Russ?
That is, that is correct, and one of the things...
I know it may not be happy and comfortable, but I think there's a basis for it.
But going to your point, too, and I understand that, and that was, that was the thing I really wrestled with, was, we can do four thousand eight hundred and eighty-two individual assessments, every month.
Let's don't say we did.
But that's what I thought we were doing, I really did think that's, that was the impression you gave me, that we were doing.
It's, that's where, well, I have it all three ways, is what I'm saying, I have it by parcel, or by individual parcel ID, I have that. But then I started rolling them up, because it's an administrative nightmare, it becomes a real nightmare to get to that detail, to make sure that you have them done right, to get to the lean book and all of that stuff, and I do lean books, it's not easy to do.
Go ahead. But I don't think averaging and putting the whole, a coal community and averaging is fair and equitable, because that is not to me fair and equitable. What is fair and equitable is taking each individual house, just like when you go to pay your taxes, they don't average it, they take each and each individual house, so...
I, I agree with you on that, here, here's the other thing to consider when we do this. If you look, it doesn't matter what size house you have, you're generating nine point five seven trips a day, on a single-family. I understand that, but because of the measurement that we have, I mean, we could have a traffic engineer come out and put the strip by your house, and by the other house, we do four thousand eight hundred and eighty, it's not, it's not effective, just not cost-effective. This is, this has been the tried and true way of doing, that's what, every methodology I've ever done has used IT, that's just one example. The other example is your administrative side, everybody has a one, it's equal, so pretty much, the single-family and the administrative costs are basically equal on the single-family. Where it's different is in the water management side, and that's, that's where the, where you may think the inequity is. But they, they contribute to the water management different, differently, but they don't in terms of trip generation, or they don't based on the administrative costs.
I still don't think it's fair and equitable.
Ma'am, just a question for Russ, if I may, if I'm early on this, please, Russ, stop me. The one thing, you and I chatted about this briefly, and I think it comes into play when you have large, I'll call it flex space, industrial space, commercial space, such as, where you have bins, bays, conduit units, where you may have, one may have a warehouse use, which is a low trip generation. Then that warehouse use can be converted, say, under the PUD or DRI, to some re, high, high trip generating retail use.
Correct.
And I guess the question becomes, based upon the methodology, if the board approves this methodology, there would have to be monitoring of that in some regard in order to try to capture that.
That's correct.
And I think the board needs to know what that would entail, because you'd have to be tracking building permits, you have to be tracking tax, business tax receipts at the county level, to see how it went from a one-employee, two thousand square foot warehouse, to a two thousand square foot restaurant, and restaurants, doctors' offices, medical offices are high trip generators.
And, and that is, that is correct, and Tony, one of the things that I'd recommend, and we talked about in the beginning of my presentation, is that every year, we need to do analysis, we need to do two things.
Do a window survey.
Yeah, well, it is, well, it is a, it is a window survey, too, but Ed, there's a way to do it with the data, when you get the tax roll, when it comes in. And I noticed that it had the land uses on it, to make sure that the land, if the land use changes on the tax roll, because they're going to have...
It may not change on the tax roll, because it's the person is changing the internal use, but it may be a commercial use, but go from a low-intensity office use to a high-intensity medical office use, from all of it.
And will the tax collector make a...
Up north, they do it with window survey.
Yeah, and, and that can be, that can happen, too, the, we just need to make sure...
We're not that big, we only got two hundred and thirty.
Yeah, so that, that wouldn't be hard to do, that's one thing that needs to be done, definitely.
It's got to be done.
The other part is, when Platts come through, so we know that that's happening, and you do get Platts, so that's good, we'll know when to make those adjustments as well. And the third thing is to look under the building permits in the county, and we can do it by area, that's pretty easy to get, and we'll take a look at that. Those three elements, I think, between the drive-by, or the windshield survey, if you will, and those other two elements, between those three, it'll keep it up to date. And when you, when this, if you decide to adopt it, or adopting the concept, it's not adopting the actual number that's in there right now, because it can change, your budget's going to change every...
That's correct, and that gets important, is that, you know, we'll get to that later on, towards the end of this, as, you also need an engineer's report to support this under the statute. When you get to that point in time, say forsaken discussion, and March, you say, this is our assessment methodology approach for this coming budget year, when you go to the budget hearing, that's when the notices will go out to everybody, and they get their individual, your allocation is now this, your dollar number is Y, but we do need to have an engineer's report also, maintenance assessments, in which would utilize Russ's data and analysis.
So Russ, you're suggesting that with the, with this...
Correct.
That this would replace, the six hundred and twenty-one fifty-one would replace the individual neighborhood...
That this would replace, the six hundred and twenty-one fifty-one would replace the individual neighborhood assessments?
Correct.
So, everyone would be, all the single-family homes would be paying the same thing for the assessment?
Correct.
Would be individuals for the water management portion?
Correct. And, and so what I'm recommending, ultimately, I mean, there's, there's three levels that I've created. One is parcel, the second one is by neighborhood, and the third one is by single family, multifamily, commercial. Because that's what everybody's been accustomed to.
Right.
So, that was the, the third recommendation, and to kind of alleviate the difference within the neighborhoods themselves.
Is that still considered fair and equitable from a, from the legal standpoint?
No, I would think so. I mean, it's, it's...
Yeah, once again, it doesn't have to be perfect and precise. And, and, and it's based upon, there's a rational basis for it, as Russ indicated, the, how you treat a particular community, its impact on the system, the benefit it receives.
And those...
Anything we've done it thirty years the wrong way, anything we do is an improvement.
Uh, here, here's another, another point to, to think about too. Within the single-family assessment, within the multifamily assessment, within the commercial assessments themselves, all have a, a, a data basis that was based on the single-family trip and the multifamily trip and the commercial trip by parcel. So, it all, even when it rolled back up, it still had a basis in there, a data basis, that would count for the, the, uh, you know, is it...